Call us officially to order here. Can you hear me okay back there?
Perfect.
We're going to call to order. Lauren, will you, well, I'll start with a prayer. Commissioner Peterson, would you mind releasing the word of prayer?
No pressure.
Yeah, that's right.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together tonight to let us do the job of the city and to think of you during this process. Please help us make the right decision, and in your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Altizer?
Here.
Coker?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Hardwick is absent. Hasty?
Here.
Longmire?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Slattery is absent, and Silkwood.
Here.
All right, that is seven.
Thank you. That is a quorum, so I'm assuming everybody's gotten a chance to review the agenda. So I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Did you catch those, Lauren? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Minutes, of course, were included as well. Were there any corrections, any questions, any revisions that need to be made? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda from our October 4th, or excuse me, to approve the minutes from our October 4th meeting.
Move to accept.
Got a motion accepting. I am going to abstain from this since I was absent, but all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll then get down to the consent agenda, and we have, it looks like, I actually turned this over to Director Free to kind of present what's on the consent agenda here.
Yeah, we have a couple of different items on the consent agenda. The first one is Durham Farms, Phase Four, Section Thirty-four. It's a final plat. Also in Durham Farms, we have Phase Four, Section Thirty-five B. Everything is in order with that, and they agree with all staff comments. We also have Raising Cane's site plan. This is the site plan that is going to be a, Raising Cane's, it is going to be constructed down here at the intersection of Main Street and Indian Lake Boulevard, where the Mexican, existing Mexican restaurant is. And then those, yes, those are, those are the only things that are on consent agenda. I will just note, if you see item number seven down there under preliminary plats, Savannah Phase Nine was on the consent agenda, but the developer has asked to defer that. They wanted to make some other significant changes, so that'll come back to you in December. But those are the three items that are on the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second? We have a motion and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson? Silkwood and Coker.
Yes.
That's all seven.
Okay. I was just told that we do have a representative from the developer, Raising Cane's, here. Would you show your hand? Would you like to come up and just address anything on this? Obviously, got, we've got, yeah. It's already been approved, but would like to hear from you since you're here, so, on that. So if you've got something that you want to share? Yeah, please step to the podium, yeah. And if you don't mind, state your name for the record, if you would, please, when you get up there.
My name is Felicia Vivins, representing Raising Cane's. I'm happy to ask any questions. I also have a presentation if y'all would like to go through it. It's not as much about this specific project, but just about the history of Raising Cane's and the brand. Raising Cane's is relatively new to Tennessee, so we have a location in Knoxville and now one in Cookeville, Tennessee. But there's over six hundred restaurants around the country. But started in Louisiana at LSU campus and has just grown. That was in nineteen ninety-six, so again, yeah. Sort of, if you can go to the next page, thank you. Thank you. So yeah, so this is the founder, Todd Graves, and so, again, he began it in nineteen ninety-six, just outside the LSU campus. If you ever go look at the locations, you'll see that they are, they are in a lot of college towns. That's sort of his love, especially in the SEC. You know, he's, even though we haven't been onto the eastern coast that much, we are in, again, Knoxville and Athens and, you know, different Tuscaloosa, those SEC towns, so. Let's see, the one thing, you know, see on my name tag here too, is one love. Cane's does one thing, and that's chicken fingers. You can get them in a three-piece box, a five-piece box. You can get them between a bun, but they do chicken fingers. No salads, no chicken breast, just chicken fingers. They do do the coleslaw, the toast, you know, and any drinks and fries, but their main product is chicken fingers, and that is considered their one love. And let's see, I wanted to show sort of the community pillars. They're a little hard to read, but on the last thing is, under vision, is active community involvement, and I wanted to share that with you because when Raising Cane's comes into a community, they become very involved in that community. And they work with over thirty thousand organizations around the country with the local communities and have donated over a hundred million dollars since the inception of the country, company. And twenty twenty-one was Raising Cane's twenty-fifth year anniversary, and they donated twenty-five million dollars throughout the country for those different organizations, and you can see the different areas, and they do do specific ones, but then they have one that's everything else, so pretty much open to any and everything. And they do that fundraising in many different ways, from doing days that supported organization where a percentage, I think it's fifteen percent typically goes through cells, will go to an organization. They will donate money, they will donate food, you know, and the different, you can do it different ways to just, they have to go apply to the Raising Cane's website, but it'll come back and they'll work directly with the actual restaurant in your locale to do that, but it's something that's very important to the founder and very important to Raising Cane's is their community involvement. See, I did sort of want to show where we're approved, but these were the elevations that are approved for this location. We made several modifications for this location, but I think we're happy and planning is happy, so we're excited to be approved here. The other thing, just to show some of the interior of the space, it's a very sort of youthful but fun. One of the places where a lot of the high schoolers will decorate to the local high schools or university, whatever's appropriate to that locale. But it tends to be a great hangout place for the youth. You know, no alcohol is sold, so it's a very safe place for them to be. And even pre-COVID, about sixty percent of the cells comes through the drive-through, and that has increased just the way we live our lives today. But again, this allows for the interior spaces to be a fun, safe place for the youth to visit and hang out. And here's another view. And then this is just some of the sample exteriors of the similar prototype here. You can see it's somewhat different from what we, what we're doing at this location, made the modifications, but, but happy to address any questions if you have any.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, welcome to Hendersonville. Very excited to have you all, and it sounds like it's a great organization with a ton of community involvement, which Hendersonville is all about community, so we love to hear that, that you're going to be super involved with, with us. I will say that my son, who goes to UT Knoxville, loves Raising Cane's, so as soon as he figures out that we have one here, maybe I'll get him home more often.
I've heard that from somebody else as well, so hopefully that's the case, and looking at a newer location there as well, so. But I appreciate it. I'm happy to address anybody else's questions.
Commissioner Haxley, I saw you light up there for a second.
I did. I was just, you know, the community involvement, I think, is absolutely great. And if you haven't been in close contact with our mayor, you need to, because he is very active in a lot of very helpful community organizations that could use your support, and we'd all appreciate it.
Well, they would be excited to work with them on different projects as well, so.
And if you need any help finding them, you're sitting right over there. Commissioner Peterson?
I think we have to be open for, but definitely check out the website. There are lots of opportunities for lots of organizations. I mean, again, it's schools, sports teams, you know, the Heart Association. I mean, it can be many different organizations, so anyway.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes, again, thank you for choosing Hendersonville. We appreciate that, and also thank you for agreeing to modifications. We are a little picky, especially Commissioner Longmire, and but that is a very highly visible piece of real estate, so we're going to be proud that you're calling Hendersonville home. And also thank you for your charitable aspect that's so important to our community. And I have one other question. How many people do you plan to hire?
So each restaurant will hire somewhere between a hundred, a hundred and twenty, to a hundred and fifty. Each shift is between twelve and fifteen employees, and, but that hundred and hundred and fifty is, you know, full and part-time employees. Obviously, a lot of high school students employed as well as management, so those are a lot of the part-time. So drives up the numbers because they're not obviously full-time, but typically eleven, twelve to fifteen employees each shift, especially in peak shifts, so.
That's outstanding. Again, thank you, and welcome to Hendersonville.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. And just want to address, when you talked about making the changes to the building and just because community is so important to us, that's one of the reasons that we are willing to work with the local jurisdictions to make the modifications to fit into those areas, because we feel like if we come in and we take a hard stance on our building, it doesn't, we're not representing that we want to be part of your community, so we appreciate you acknowledging those changes.
I've just got one final question and then a comment. You said that the concept originated on the campus there at LSU Baton Rouge. Is, there's not going to be any LSU reference paraphernalia in the store, is there?
There, there isn't.
Okay, good. And I only say that because I got my master's degree at Alabama, and we play LSU this weekend, and I know this has already been approved, but we can always pull stuff back off, so, I'm so kidding, I am so kidding, so, but no.
The founder actually went to the University of Georgia.
Okay.
But he was from Baton Rouge, and so that's where he started that, that location. But again, everyone is focused on the local school.
Okay, okay. That's, that works. Okay. Now, in all seriousness, thank you for being here, and I appreciate you taking the time to go through the presentation. It shows that you want to be part of this community and that, then be involved, and obviously the things that are important to the founder, important to your whole organization. We appreciate that very much. Appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Thank you again.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Since we defer, well, yeah, sorry, I'm jumping around. Item six on the agenda, we have the final plat for Holiday Heights. Sidney is on this one. Can you kind of tell us a little bit what we've got going on here, please?
Sure. This is something that has not been before the Planning Commission before. It's a little bit of a new thing, but it's not going to be the last thing, I'm pretty sure. So, but this is a request for a variance to the front yard setback. It's one, it's really not even a variance, more of a deviation from fifty feet to thirty feet. And the zoning ordinance basically is what the Board of Zoning Appeals can grant variances to. And so if the zoning ordinance says that the setback's thirty feet and they want to go twenty feet, they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to make that appeal. However, the, when the zoning ordinance says thirty feet and the plat says fifty feet, then that falls into our subdivision regulations that governs plats. The Planning Commission is the body that can approve deviations from the subdivision regulations from the plats. And the subdivision regulations say whichever one's greater governs, except that the Planning Commission can, can and has the authority to grant what is approved by zoning. So this particular project went before the Board of Zoning Appeals in September, initially requesting a twenty-foot front setback variance. And that board recommended that they shave off the front, it's going to be a front-entry garage. They recommended that they shave that off and push it back, and that any variances needed to be requested from the rear. So the applicant, when working with the surveyor, realized that when they cut that garage off, that actually then meant that they really only needed to be at the thirty-foot front setback line. And so they didn't need a variance, and that is why they're coming to you to request that they get a deviation from what's on the plat to be in line with what is in the zoning ordinance at thirty feet for that zone. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I know this is kind of a new thing, but again, there's a lot of lots, like on the peninsula, that have fifty feet, seventy-five feet, hundred-foot setbacks. And so I don't think that this will be the last time that we'll see a request like this to be where the zoning would allow.
Thank you, Sidney. I'll just ask, do we have a representative or property owner here tonight? If you'd step to the podium, introduce yourself, please.
Sit, sit over time, Steve. I'm Steve Bridges with Bridges Land Surveying. Back in August of this year, the Reeds hired us to do a, a lot staking on a nineteen fifty-nine plat, one of the earlier ones in the area, and we went out and we, we did a lot staking, showed the improvements on the property. And probably, they probably were somewhat surprised that it had a fifty-foot setback at the front. But if you go back and look at the days when we didn't have sewers, it was not unusual to have some large setbacks at the front, just so that the septic systems were out there. We no longer need those. So a couple of months after, or a month, maybe a month and a half after we did that survey, Ms. Reed came by and said, I went to the Board of Zoning Appeals for this, and, and we had a conversation. And really what a lot of that conversation is, is, is people have always heard the word variance, so they just go for a variance. And we, we've talked, because variances are not easy to come by. They are going to be the hardest thing you probably can get. And I went over, I said, this is something where we should look at, this property is now is owned SR, SR one, which has got a thirty-foot setback, which means it can be moved to thirty feet in there. So it's easier to go and request from the, from the Planning Commission a thirty-foot setback in there and stay within what the zoning is required now without asking for anything extra. And that's, that's how we got to this point today. If we can, if you look at that, the drawing that's over there, you'll notice that there's multiple, multiple houses that are already at thirty, and then there's some that are actually in there at twenty. But we're, we're looking at the thirty, saying, this is not the first time y'all are going to see this. You're probably going to see more. As Sidney said, it's probably going to happen again, so we're just looking to get a, do a three-page plat amendment and send it through the, through the proper channels and, and get approved so they can build on this lot. Any questions?
Director Free, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I will make one point. As you look up there, the area that they're requesting a thirty-foot setback is the area that's kind of highlighted in the blue, with the blue rectangle. The, the property right to the, above that in the corner, I just wanted to note that property is not a part of that subdivision.
Correct.
That's just a, a piece of property out there that actually isn't in either one of those subdivisions in that, correct, Steve?
That's correct.
Just kind of wanted you to make aware of that, because it's setting back. You know, that's setting back pretty far, but it's not, it's not even a part of any, any phase of a subdivision plat over there.
No, it's, it's not. It's, it's actually, if you look at the drawing, you can see where their driveway is cutting the corner of this one. And that's, but if you also look at it, that's because there's, there's a power pole right in the middle of the way, so.
That's correct. I just wanted to, wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Thank you. I'll just kind of lead off with questions here, if you don't mind on that, and just, just kind of help on this a little bit. Obviously, we do have some variances and setbacks there on that. I mean, looking at, we've got some as close as twenty to the street. I am going to assume, and I want you to either confirm or deny this, that these houses in this neighborhood were probably built at different times. You alluded to that this fifty-foot setback dates back to when everything was on septic, that sort of thing. So what are kind of the ages of kind of the neighboring homes here?
You've got some newer ones in there, but then you have some that go all the way back to what a lot of people used to refer to as fishing camps.
Okay, okay. So you've got a mix.
You've got a little bit of everything.
Okay.
From large to older.
Okay. Questions, comments from commissioners? Going once? Okay, Director Free?
I might just mention this too. This is something that we looked at at a staff level as, as just something we can do at a staff level. And then we might have done it at a staff level, but our determination on it was, well, with it already had been platted, really the proper thing would be to go to the Planning Commission and let them review it to do that. So that's, I just wanted to share that with you, that this was one of those things that, from a, from a staff level standpoint, we couldn't quite get that we had the full authority to do that. We felt that the proper thing was to come and, and have the Planning Commission look at that, look at that, well, it's sort of a deviation of that. I just wanted to share that with you. We don't, the planning staff does not have any particular issue with the thirty-foot for the reason that it's coming here.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, it seems that, oh, it, it worries me that, that I hear that we're going to have a lot more of this coming up as we, I guess, build houses bigger, or maybe they need to be closer to the street. Somebody designed a subdivision back when that they wanted a fifty-foot setback. And I don't really think it's within my purview, or maybe this body, to say, well, the people that put that together didn't know what they were doing, and now we need to, we need to change it. So I'm going to have to vote no on this for fear of how many more of these we're going to get. That could, that could open up a can of worms.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Director Free?
Yeah, I might, I might to kind of couch what, what Sidney was, what Ms. Simpson was talking about, is the reason that probably you might see more of these, yeah, the reason that you might see more of these in the future aren't necessarily because we're going to have more of this necessarily occurring than we've had in the past. It's, in looking back in previous years, these things have went to the BZA. But in looking at it, as I looked at it with this, the BZA can only give variances for things that are in the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance says thirty feet, so that's, I think, if I'm correct, Sidney, that's why Sidney was sharing. I don't know that we're necessarily going to see more than we have in the past, but any that are, that are great, that are equal to or greater than the setback in the zone, for the zone, won't go to the BZA. They'll come here. In the past, I think they have accidentally went to the BZA in the past. But this is the proper channel for them to go through, so I just wanted to kind of explain that.
That's correct, and there's typically two or three a year, and they're typically on the peninsulas where there's a hundred-foot or eighty-foot setback, and they're usually wanting to go maybe fifty or sixty feet with an addition. That's what we typically see. This is a vacant lot that has never been built on, and the homes that are south of it have been there for easily since the sixties, and were able to fit into those small building envelopes. If this were going for a straight variance, the lot, a typical lot size is twelve thousand five hundred square feet in the zone. This one is, I think, seventy-four hundred square feet, so it's significantly smaller and would potentially qualify for a variance, which, like Steve said, is very hard to get. You have to have a condition where your lot's a lot smaller than what's normally allowed, or too narrow, or have topographical issues to even apply for a variance. So they were able to apply for it because it's a much smaller lot. And so because they're now asking for the thirty feet instead of the twenty feet, like Keith said, in the past, it would have gone to the BZA because we had not delved deep into who's supposed to look at these. And so, so this one is coming to the board as the first one. But, and we wouldn't have necessarily discovered it at this particular one if it hadn't gone through that BZA and we hadn't scoured deep into it. Because like Keith said, in the past, they had gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So now, looking at it, this is the proper board to review if a deviation to allow somewhere between thirty feet and whatever the plotted setback is, is appropriate. So I just wanted to kind of further clarify there.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans.
Sorry to take a second, but at the apple, and I do understand, we've got a lot of things that are old, a lot of covenants that are old, but they are still covenants. And I did see where in the BZA you had two neighbors that complained. And then I think about over on Sanders Ferry. It's not Saunders Ferry, it's Sanders Ferry. If you go down through there, like you're going out on the peninsula and you look on the right, you have houses over there that have front yards that are an acre or more. They're huge. What's going to happen when they want to redo those and move that line up thirty feet from Sanders Ferry Road? Will we be looking at the same thing here? And there, there's a reason to put restrictive covenants in a, in a subdivision and this, where this might be something that needs to be changed, I don't know. Honestly, I haven't driven out there. But we may be opening a can of worms, and I'm, I'm just really concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just basic, touching on a little bit of what Commissioner Evans said. You know, when I read through the BZA minutes, there were some neighbors that had complained, and I think that was, you know, based on the fifty-foot setback. Have we heard anything now that it's going to, or the, I'm sorry, the twenty-foot setback? Have we heard any more now that it's going to be potentially thirty?
So this is not a, the Planning Commission is not a public hearing action. It's to make a determination as to whether or not they can go with what the zoning allows. So no public hearing was required or noticed. So no public hearing was required or notices required to be sent.
We're only asking what the zoning already allows. We're not asking for anything special. That's what the zoning is on, and that's what the setback is required.
I have a question, I guess, for staff, and it'd be the best place to direct this. If we approve this here tonight, does this set a precedent, in any way does it bind us to approve future requests? The circumstances may be a little bit more questionable on that, I guess, to be able to wait.
I don't think, I don't think it does for like, like, like any other request for a thirty-foot from a sixty or from a fifty, that, oh, we did this one, so you got to do it. I think it's just basically, if you made the motion and it's just based on this situation at this street, at this section of this, you know, this particular development, so it's really just uniquely to this. Now, if you approved this and there was another situation that was very similar and had very similar adjacent properties that were similar to that, then I think if it was approved at one point in time, then it would be reasonable that it might be considered favorably. But, you know, the makeup of the planning commission kind of changes over years, so, you know, it could be, something could get approved tonight or denied tonight, and the same exact thing four or six years from now, you know, could end up getting approved. So I don't think this is committing you to that, but if that was a concern, I think a motion to approve, you know, with a finding of fact based on the proximity of the other existing homes, the overall age of the subdivision predating the city, you know, something like that, something that gives it a little bit more uniqueness to the situation that you, if you were, if you chose to approve it, that would do that. That would help, that would help make it. But I understand what John's saying about some of those hundred-foot, hundred-twenty-foot setbacks on some of those things, but I don't necessarily think if you approve this, that it means you have to approve that too. I think you should fairly consider, if you had somebody that had a hundred-foot setback, just to fairly consider it, given what the situation was, you know, around it, but when you're looking at the deviation. So if that kind of answers that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hasty?
Issue with the driveway been resolved?
Well...
Do what?
I think they're willing to deal with the driveway because there's a power pole right in the middle of, I don't think, it's only about a ten-foot entrance into that, let's call it a deeded lot out there, and it would require getting the utilities to move that pole out of the way. Otherwise, they can't get to it.
But I noticed the folks at 107 opposed...
And that's the ones not in the subdivision, right? Is that the next one up the hill?
Yeah.
That's...
They opposed the request to twenty feet, right?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, I think so.
And if I may, just also kind of help to Vanessa's point, it would have been improper for us to send out public hearing notices for a plat amendment. However, the neighbors at 107, when I spoke with them in that BZA process, I did tell them that if they were denied at the Board of Zoning Appeals, that there was a potential path that they could take this to the planning commission without a public hearing to request that thirty-foot variance. So they're not unaware that this is a possibility, just to help with that.
I just have a couple other questions for staff or whomever would be appropriate to answer this. Just for clarification's sake, 107 is the one that is not in the subdivision, and they're the ones that are also having the issue with the power poles, correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's the one in the corner that their driveway is actually cutting the corner of this, this particular property. This property has no access issues. It has, it has plenty of access issues.
And you started to get to the second question I was going to have there, the driveway issue and that sort of thing, that is, that is their problem regardless of whether we approve the setback or...
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I think now would probably be the appropriate time for those neighbors to get with these folks. It's not really for, it's not really for the planning commission to really get that resolved, but it'd probably be in their best interest to work with their neighbors here, especially before a house gets built, and try to figure something out.
I guess just kind of the last question, again, for either the applicant or staff. Looking at this, there are two, two of the first three homes in the subdivision on the same side of the street have thirty-foot setbacks. I'm just curious how those came to be, if you have any knowledge on what kind of background was on that.
Yes, both of those went to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Do you know the time period of that, just offhand?
The one that is adjacent to 107 went in, I think, 2016.
Okay.
The one that's on the corner was earlier in that, maybe 2014 or so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I am, oh, Commissioner Hasty, sorry.
I agree with what John is saying, but, you know, we need to be real careful. But I think since there are other houses in the neighborhood that are already at thirty feet, one at twenty feet, and that our current zoning ordinance allows for that zoning classification to be a thirty-foot front setback, I'll make a motion that we approve the request with all staff comments.
Second.
Before we take on, Commissioner Hasty, can I just ask you to amend that a little bit and just add a finding of fact to your motion that just based upon specifically saying...
Well, based on the fact that the zoning ordinance will allow that thirty feet.
But you're expressing that as a finding of fact in this, correct?
That's right.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was in there. Okay. So we have a motion, a second from, is that Commissioner Peterson, the second? Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
All right, that's six and one, it passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we are item eight, this is staff level projects that have been approved, and I'll turn that over to Director Freed, just to kind of give us a rundown on these couple of them.
Yes, that, we've got the Community Church Outdoor Ministry Center off of Main Street. We have the Lakeview Addition Lot Consolidation. I think that's the Mapco, you have the Mapco Gas Station at the corner of Main Street and Sanders Ferry. Yeah, Sanders Ferry, that's right. Sanders Ferry. Then looking at the staff projects, you can see we have about seventeen of those. I can answer any questions for any of, any of those. And we do have, I might note, Tailgate Brewery down there. We're working with them, they're looking to utilize, fully utilize that building. We're discussing with them some issues that they're looking at some temporary covering or enclosure over their outside area, and so we're in discussions with them. And chances are, if we work something out with them, it probably will end up coming before the planning commission. Because it's kind of a, there's just some issues there over temporary, you know, the temporary, temporary covering that they want to do for the outside area during the winter that we kind of go beyond what the staff is going to be able to do for them. So we'll figure that out. So that probably will be coming to you, to you all shortly. But I can answer any questions anybody would have on anything. As you can see, it's, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of projects that are, that are going on there. That's all I had on that. Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you, Chairman. Director Freed, thank you and your staff for working on all of these. I know you're being inundated, and we appreciate your thoroughness on all your reviews. But I did want to follow up from last month's meeting. Have we heard anything more from Walmart about their exterior renovations?
No, I think, I think they just accepted the decision, not that they couldn't do the extra blue that they wanted, and we haven't heard anything other than I think they've just accepted.
Okay.
Accepted that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Altizer, you're lit up, that may be inadvertent.
Yeah, it was from the...
Okay, no problem. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, we've got item ten on the agenda, just active deferrals. There's nothing coming up tonight, but I'll let you, Director Freed, tackle items ten and eleven, and then I'll follow up with twelve.
Volunteer State Bank, we've been in communication with them. They asked to defer until next month, so they may be coming back in December. If they do, remember, we only held that public hearing open if they were coming back at this meeting, so we'll re- notify everybody, you know, once that gets back on the, on the agenda. I'm not for sure what direction that, that that's going to go, if they're looking to move forward with it. Right now, I think it's still a possibility, so we'll find out about that. Southern Nurseries, they've been diligent, working with an engineer, structural engineer, to get that report, but they were unable because of the busy schedule for the structural engineer to get that done. But I think they're hopeful to be back on the agenda for action and bring that to the planning commission in December. So we look forward to that. Planning Director comments, just everybody keep in mind, we will be having a work session at six-thirty on November the fifteenth for Westlake. That's going to be bookended by some things that the BOMA is going to be doing before and after. So the portion of the meeting dealing with the work session on that will probably be about fifty minutes or so. And what we'll do is we'll make sure everybody, I think, most everybody has access to it, but we'll get it back out to you for the presentation that was done at Jean Brown. And we'll make sure everybody gets that that wasn't, wasn't able to attend that. I appreciate everybody making the effort to attend that, that we're there, so that everybody's kind of familiar. And then what we'll do is when we have the, we have the consultant here, I won't have him go over all of that stuff, I'll have him kind of summarize all of the findings of the input that we've received back and kind of couch all that, and then, and then give a brief overview of the actual plan itself. And then we can interact and we can ask questions, and we can answer questions. And then my hope is, is from that work session, then maybe we get a little bit of direction on any changes that we need to make in the plan, and then we'll make those changes and we'll bring that back to the planning commission at a date in the future. One thing I wanted to let you know is, the, on the album, remember the album with the covered parking? And it, and it was denied on a four-to-four vote. They actually appealed that, since it was in a planned development, a site plan in a planned development, then the proper place for an appeal for anything in a planned development would be BOMA, so they're exercising that. So that'll be going on November the tenth at the next BOMA meeting. BOMA will be, will be hearing that. And so I guess it'll be a final decision on that, on that appeal. So we'll see how that, how that goes. Everything is going well, and I'm trying to think if there's, yeah, I think, I'll just leave it, leave it at that. Everything is going, is going very well, but there's a, there's a whole lot of stuff going on. But, but I certainly appreciate everyone's attendance tonight, and I really appreciate this planning commission and your involvement and, you know, and how you read your packets and you come here very educated on what we're talking about at the meeting. And I know that takes time and effort, and myself and the planning staff really appreciate that.
Thank you, Director Freed. And then, on behalf of the planning commission, I want to thank you all for the professional job that staff does and you do and the whole team does on that. And before I entertain a motion to adjourn, Commissioner Peterson is lit up down there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Director Freed, I forgot to mention, there was some permitting issues with Costco. Has that been cleared up yet?
The issue with that had to deal with FEMA, and it had to deal with just a technical correction to the FEMA map, and it's just a kind of a little bit of a time-consuming thing. I think we're going to hear something back maybe the middle of this month on where that is and the process, but there's no problems, everything's still moving forward. They just got to tie up that little, you know, that little issue in regards to, in regards to that, so is what's, is what's going on with that.
Okay, good to hear that, thank you.
And I may, I may just share as well, we had so many things on the staff-reviewed projects, but we are working with the Indian Lake Multifamily Project, the one that's over there by Hobby Lobby. And so in working with them, you know, the whole thing about the parking off-site and all of that, that, the ability to do that dissolved, and so then they've had to draw back, and so there will be no parking on that off-site, and then they're scaling back their building as well. And so the number of those units are scaling back, and I think that's something, I'm sorry, I skipped over that earlier, but I think that's something probably that the planning commission, you know, that we had discussed, and we're making sure that visually the building and everything is all still within the full spirit of what was approved. It's just going to be a smaller number of units, and it will not have any parking off-site. So they've just kind of had to scale back, so, so what's happened. So, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Will that be something that y'all deal with at staff level?
Yeah, we'll deal with that at the, at the staff level.
Okay. Thank you, Director Freed. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please hit and file by saying aye.